How are you?
I'm doing well. I'm just getting over the flu. Thank goodness it didn't last very long.
That's an early flu pace.
Yes.
I hope you're having a good recovery.
Yes, we caught it early. We got Tamiflu.
I'm glad for that.
I had to log in early because I never know when my computer will needs updating or it would stop working or.
I think that's a smart idea because those things happen.
Yes, just this morning we were doing the little weekly debrief and my computer decided it wasn't going to work anymore.
It's just, it's maddening in a way. It seems like it should be routine. Hello Dom. This is afternoon. Good afternoon Dom. Hello Gretchen, I'm eating my lunch on the camera. There's a little teriyaki place right across the street so I can get back and forth in 10 minutes. I think they have a new person in the kitchen because this is better than the last time I had. Hello Gretchen.
So hi there.
I wasn't sure it was you because it usually says Clyde.
Well, it finally occurred to me to ask him to put my name on it. So Tim, are we going to talk today about how to get to social security?
We're going to talk about anything you want Gretchen.
Okay, that's what I want. I've got a client whose mother-in-law came to visit him from New York. She's sick. She's in the hospital. They've decided to keep her. The first thing that has to happen is social security has to know her change of address. Because nothing will work until they do, they open up her account.
And social security has been very difficult lately.
Well, tell me in Washington what hasn't been difficult and I'm not talking about this Washington.
Yeah, no, well, it's a, it's traumatic honestly. People are just traumatized.
Absolutely, including me.
It's, you know, I was talking to a colleague of mine yesterday and I said, you know, you have to know that it's just the beginning, right? This is, it's still very early.
Right. Well, we've come through, we've come through other tough times before. I just have to count on that being our future.
I think that's a good thing to stay hopeful, right? I mean, a sense of perspective. You know, people, people, older people like you and me, you know, we've seen a lot of changes.
And I'm probably old enough to be your mother.
My mother was eighty-six on Saturday.
Congratulations, I'm older than her.
I know you are. I know how old you are, but it's lovely anyway.
And this meeting is being recorded. Oh, thanks.
It could be. People like for it to be recorded. I, I, I mean, I think that's a big commitment to go back and listen to something an hour long later, but people ask for it, so.
I think, I think it's important Tim particularly. Because we don't know who can join us now. Or in any of the dates that you've made available.
Yeah, well, I was trying to get it done before we got super busy with open enrollment, right? But I know we're already getting calls. In fact Gretchen, I'm going to be in Kathlamm at tomorrow with Pam to do some outreach.
Oh, really?
Yep. If you don't have other plans, feel free to join us.
Thank you, but I'm no longer able to drive.
Okay, you still seem as sharp as when I first met you.
Well, I, thank you. I appreciate that. Crossing my fingers for whatever is coming up, but it's, I'm never going to be fifty or sixty or seventy again.
That's what I tell my mom, you know, I went back to visit her because she had a surgery. I don't want to feel like this. And I said, I know what you want is to be fifty again, and that's just not possible.
Right.
So I think you should relish how it feels now compared to how it's going to feel in ten years. I'm not going to live that long. I say every time we talk about this, that's what you say. And every time I'm proved right.
Where does she live, Tim?
We live about fifteen minutes south of Charlotte, North Carolina.
Oh, wow.
So just barely inside of South Carolina.
Uh huh, uh huh. Let's see, there's a beautiful old estate. There with great gardens. I can't come up with a name. Tell me what I should be asking about.
I think you mean Biltmore.
Biltmore.
The Vanderbilt property, right?
It, it could be, or is it? Darn it, it's gone. Oh, well.
Easy come, easy go, I say.
Okay, I'm going to turn off my cam, uh, my microphone. I'm getting silly.
I like you this way. Anyway, say hey to Clyde, okay? Uh, DeBette, how are you, my friend? You're on mute right now.
I'm terrific, thanks. How about you?
Also terrific, thank you. Having a good day?
Yep, great.
Um, we had a offer from our friends at AARP. To do what they call a tele-town hall program. So kind of a call, you know, almost like a radio call-in program.
Yep.
So the commissioner and I just did an hour with them.
And looked good?
I think it was good.
Mm-hmm, alright.
They had a poll question like, um, push one if this was helpful to you. Push two if this was not helpful to you. Push three if you're not sure. A lot of people said, I'm not sure. So after the call, the commissioner said, what should I think about that? And I said, well, this is what I think about it is that people's concerns are so personal that when I, when I answer a, a general question like, can I wait to sign up for Medicare Part B? They don't think it applies to them. They want you to answer a very specific question.
Yep, yep.
So they're not sure. Or it's still early and they haven't been on the plan finder tool yet to know what's changing for next year.
Yeah. And in Gray's Harbor and Pacific County, there are definitely some changes.
There is. There is. Um, you're not alone. If that's any consolation, there are lots of changes everywhere.
Ah, yeah.
I don't know if that makes you feel better.
No, well, I, I had a client this morning and she's a retired PEB employee.
Yep.
And so fortunately, there wasn't a change there, so.
You know, um, for PEB, a little bit of a good news story this year, right? That the, um, rates for the UMP are going down a little bit.
What, yeah, I should, I was going to look at that. What did they go down to? Do you know?
I don't. I mean, I've, I've seen it, but I didn't retain it.
Yeah, yeah. I would imagine it's still higher than what the other offerings are.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, that's real. Yeah. But after a couple of years of big increases, it feels like a relief to people.
Yeah.
You know, it's like that, it's like that old joke where the guy go do is a doctor and he says, it hurts when I do this. And the doctor says, stop doing.
I say it hurts every time I spend more money on healthcare, so.
Times are tough out there, right? Gas is four and a half dollars a gallon.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a lot of money. I was telling Gretchen, I was in South Carolina recently helping my mom with her recovery. You can get gas for two and a quarter out there.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, we have high gas prices, high heating level. I know. What's a guy, is my friend Dave Aldrich here yet? What's a guy going to get for a quart of wood out in Aberdeen these days? Two and a half at least, right?
Dave cuts his own, I think.
Dave cuts his own wood. I do too. I like cutting my own wood. I built myself a wood rack this summer. So I, I have a better sturdy one. That's good, a good exercise. What passes for exercise, I guess, these days. Wow, so lovely to see you all. This makes me so happy. Highlight of my day. Uh, I know some of you are new because you just started working here. Uh, or you're new because you just started being a volunteer coordinator or um, a volunteer, so. Um, I am chronically late. Um, so I have a little bit of grace for people to take a few minutes to gather. So I'm just going to chat, chat with you here for a minute. But we gather up and then we'll get started. Uh, Gretchen and I were just visiting before the program. We will be recording the program today. A number of people have asked for the programs to be recorded so they can go back and listen to it again. I guess it's like listening to old Bob Newhart or Red Skelton albums, but maybe not. I don't know. In case you haven't heard vinyl records are back. Big deal. Big deal at my house. My brother-in-law sent my wife, they're twins. The turntable of the kind that I had. Seventies, so the irony of that, I don't know, but we have a, a new old turntable receiver. She's listening to Joni Mitchell and I'm listening to John Coltrane, so we have covered our bases there. Um, apologies for being slow to get you a, a sort of agenda in the form of a slide deck. I did send it or this morning. I'm going to, uh, as I typically do, sort of try to talk towards that, but mostly I'm interested in hearing from you about how you're doing. And, uh, what we can do to help support you, uh, as we're a week or so away from open enrollment, peak workload for us. Um, so feel free, please, um, raise your hand if you want to ask a question or if you need me to clarify something. Um, we have a chat feature in Zoom, so you can put a chat in Zoom and I will attend to it, or I have lots of colleagues on the phone, someone will attend and bring it to my attention, but this is meant to be, um, you know, comfortable pace. I, I think we have ninety minutes reserved, so we shouldn't have to rush through it. Um, so I'll kind of plan I do in my presentation and then we can have some dialogue. So with that, I think, um, I'm going to go ahead and, um, get started. And I'll, um, start as I typically do with, um, introducing myself to you. So I'm Tim Smolin and I'm the Shiba Program Manager. Uh, I've been in my job a little over four and a half years now. This is my sort of second tour of duty. I started my career in state government working here in the office of the Insurance Commissioner, um, being a trainer, so working directly with the volunteers out in the field. Um, I love that work a lot and it still feels very meaningful to me and it, um, feels like an honor and a privilege to come back again and be the Shiba Program Manager and help, um, kind of architect. Um, where we're kind of trying to, um, aim for. Um, when I came back into the role, um, I, I, for me, I, for me, I just have, um, you know, kind of an easy clarity about this. I, you know, in, in the time that I get to do this, um, and I think of it as just, you know, my time to be a steward of the program, but many of you were here before I came and you'll be here after I go. And so I'm just trying to be kind of a responsible steward and the two things that I'm the most focused on in the tenure that I have is really thinking about helping us work on equity issues and technology issues. Um, I just really feel like for the program to continue to be relevant for the long term, we have to continue to really strive for uh, the way the program was designed to be, which is like neighbors helping neighbors, peer-to-peer counseling. As much the lived experience of our clients being the lived experience of our volunteers. Um, and, and that for me is a lot about what, um, how I would sort of describe the equity conversation. You shouldn't get worse service. Because you don't have English or you live in a rural area or you're a person with a disability. And then on the technology front, of course, the technology is just galloping forward and you know, there's this expression like the digital divide and the haves and have-nots and um, obviously we're, you know, that's a top-of-mind concern for us and I've got some notes in the program about changes for the Medicare website and the Medicare Plan Finder Tool and Gretchen and I were talking about the challenges of working with social security if you're not online. So tho- those are the two priority areas for me that I feel like we need to attend to and, and open enrollment is like peak season for that, right? So um, thinking of the volunteers and the network, we do about half of the volume of individual counseling and the whole program happens in the fourth quarter related to Medicare open enrollment, so it's peak season for us. Um, and we've, um, you know, we're obviously still making small adjustments, but you know, um, pretty well like our plans for the strategic approach to this is kind of baked in. And so now we're just hoping to have a great experience together. So let me share my, um, slide deck with you. Um, teach myself how the technology works again. Um, Ed DeBeck, are you able to see that?
We can see that.
Hey Kelly, good, good afternoon. Okay, our, um, sort of Shiba Town Hall Program. Uh, when I came back to the program, I initiated a tradition of doing these once a quarter. Uh, my principal purpose in doing this is just to thank you personally. Um, it's a big commitment. It's a lot of responsibility and what you do is very impactful in the community. And so I just want you to hear from me personally how much I appreciate uh, the work that you do. And I also want there to be like an unmediated conversation between you and me in terms of feedback and that doesn't mean that, um, I don't have confidence in your trainer or in our supervisors. It just means that I want there to be, you know, kind of an open door policy so that we can talk about things, uh, very directly and very openly and, um, you know, for me, the, the, right, the long-term goal is that the volunteers really lead the program and the professional staff are here to support that work. So this is the October or the open enrollment version of the, uh, town hall program. So here's my contact information. You can call me. You can email me. I'm better at email than phone calls. Uh, I would love to hear from you anytime. Here's our briefly agenda for today. Um, I'd like to hear from you about appreciations that you have for each other. So if there's somebody in your group or somebody that you've worked with across groups that you'd like to call out um, for accommodation, we would love to hear that. And then I'm going to give you an update about, uh, kind of the status of our network, including our staff team as well as um, the volunteers and volunteer coordinators, partners out in the field. Then I'm going to just share kind of from my, uh, my vantage point of view about what I think is happening here in Washington, what's happening in the Medicare program and then, uh, where I think, um, kind of the federal and state political scene is at. And I, I sent you a brief note about this recently. Um, and then I'll do a quick review about today's program, a little bit of a forecast about what comes next in the next three to six months. And then, as I said, the goal is to have ample time for questions and answers. So um, with that, let me ask if there's folks who would like to share an appreciation for someone else, um, that works in the network as a staff person or a volunteer. Come ahead Shane.
I definitely wanted to give a shout out to my team, Victoria, um, Tracy, Aaron, Harris. You are all doing fantastic to work right now. Harris is going breezing right through her training. Victoria, Tracy and Aaron have started taking live phone calls on the hotline and they are doing amazing.
Thank you for that. And Shane, you might need to introduce yourself to people, please.
Sure. To those of you who don't know me, my name is Shane McLamore. I have been at the Office of the Insurance Commissioner for about five years. I have taken over as the uh, supervisor for the Shiva hotline during open enrollment this year. And we are going to be taking live phone calls, hopefully uh, alleviating some of the stress early on before it gets to that point. And, uh, in terms of call volumes for the volunteers, we'll be providing self-service resources for folks who are able to. And for those who aren't, we are still referring over to the volunteer coordinators.
Thank you. Good to see you Shane. Thanks for being here. But other folks that have an appreciation they want to share?
I would love to share, um, just a quick one. We have three pretty new sponsors and I think all of our volunteers and all of our, um, all of our existing volunteer coordinators um, all know the work that goes into just getting everything up and running. So I, I want to do a, a big shout out to Nicole at Timber River Connections in Lewis County. And I want to shout out Scott, who is a lead volunteer at WCC Council on Aging. And I want to, um, really put a, a big thanks out to Catholic Charities. Um, our new sponsor covering Yakima, Benton, Franklin, Walla Walla and Columbia Counties. I'm just doing marvelous work already in a challenging time. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thanks Kendra. Hey Monica, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. My name is Monica. I'm the Shiba Program Coordinator for Spokane in Whitman County. Our sponsor is Aging and Long-Term Care of Eastern Washington. And I would really like to give a shout out to Nobu. He, I see that he is on the call today. And, um, he has started to take in, um, he's been doing in-person counseling, but we have like fifty-plus, uh, clients waiting for us right now. And my majority of my phone counselors are taking a break and they're helping their family members out. So I am in desperate need and Nobu jumped right in and is assisting with um, over the phone counseling. So great big shout out to Nobu for jumping in. That's the way to do it. For anybody who is new, got to get in there and try it. And, um, also a big shout out to all of my team members and Mike, um, for getting this through this next couple of months. It's already crazy and we're learning more and more every day. So thank you all.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thanks Nobu. Who else would like to be, um, heard for an appreciation?
Well, this is Gretchen. Philip, I want to thank you. You have pulled me through the knothole more than you'll ever know. Thank you.
You're welcome and thank you.
Philip, maybe you should just introduce yourself then so that people know what kind of support you're giving Gretchen and them if they want it.
Well, I support the volunteers with, uh, complex cases. They can refer them directly to me. And so I've been here six and a half years as a Medicare Complaints Coordinator. And, uh, yeah, uh, complex cases and, uh, and, uh, Medicare fraud and, uh, and what else do I do?
Well, you and I have the most interesting conversations about, uh, medical billing issues, ambulance transports, was the person admitted or not? Uh, errors in the social security, uh, the Medicare Master Beneficiary Index.
Ah, benefits coordination and recovery.
And I just sent you a case this morning for COB, you know?
Yep, saw that. And congressional referrals.
And referrals, right? So we call it constituent referrals so that we get from other, uh, offices for other elected officials or state agencies. So Philip's kind of my go-to person for those. Um, and, um, and, and no exaggeration. It has, uh, everything to do with our good reputation is that Philip is so kind and responsive and patient with people. So thanks for that Gretchen. There's my friend Bob Murphy. Bob Murphy, how are you today? You're still on mute, my friend. Bob has the distinction of, um, surviving having been trained by me twenty-five years ago and still enduring as a volunteer. So congratulations, Bob. Please tell your wife I said hello. Um, Kelsey Brontide says her microphone is not working, but deep appreciation for Pam Monahan and Monica Kudner for helping her, uh, learn her way into her role as a volunteer coordinator. Um, Kelsey is, uh, volunteer coordinator with Catholic Charities. As Kendra said, they're taking over for Central and Southeast Washington. Um, so thanks for that, Kelsey. And Abby said, appreciate Rosie for accessibility and guidance on difficult cases. And Sue McClain, I don't know if Sue's on the phone, but I see Dave Wilson. Dave, there's an appreciation for you from Abby. I know you've been working as a mentor for her. So thank you for that. How about any other appreciations that people want to unburden themselves? How about any other appreciations that people want to unburden themselves of? It's a shame if you're carrying that weight around, appreciation that you can't share with someone.
I have one more just for this group. You, you may not see behind the scenes or you might. We have now a full team of regional training consultants or RTCs. And I am, I am so pleased and so proud to work closely with this team. And you can see we have Linda Deekman, we have Rosie Rodriguez Lee, Sam Stone, Shannon Sky, Noreen Bryson and Ari Laguna Antu. And they cover the entire state. And I just want to shout out how, how wonderful they are to work with and what a privilege it is to see the work that they are doing along with everybody on this call. So thank you for that and, and I just appreciate them more than words.
Thanks Kendra. Anybody else have an appreciation? Come ahead Ed.
Tim, I'd like to, I'd like to give a shout out to Dave Aldrich, Big Wave Dave. And I tell you, he is a wealth of knowledge and there isn't an issue. I haven't been able to go to him for help and he's very knowledgeable. So I just appreciate all he does.
And tell, and tell people why we called him Big Wave Dave, please.
Dave's on the radio in Aberdeen and answers Medicare questions for people and gets interviewed, I think, once a month.
Yeah, got his own little call-in show going on out there for a number of years. Yeah.
He was up for an Emmy, I believe, so.
Yeah, something. He was up for something. Steve Pessek, did you want to be heard, my friend? You were looking like you might want to be heard. Nope. Are you in town now Steve or are we reaching in Italy?
No, I'm in town this year.
I'm glad you're here. We need you.
Thank you.
All right, let me get back to my little slideshow here then. Bear with me here a second. Okay, so quick update about changes in our network then. So as Kendra said, we have three new sponsor organizations. To me, a sponsor organization is a group that does volunteer management work in partnership with us like Monica or Kelly who are on the call, Kelsey. So we have the Whatcom Council on Aging up in Bellingham. And Catholic Charities is Yakima, Benton Franklin, Walla Walla and Columbia Counties. Timber River Connections is Lewis County. And then we have two new community partners that work with us, which is NAPCA, which is the National Asian Pacific Council on Aging. They're a nationwide outfit with an office in Seattle. And then Unity Care Northwest, which is also in Bellingham. So very excited to sign them on and a bunch of renewal contracts for sponsors and community partners to do what we call Enhanced Outreach as we continue to work on making programs accessible to people for whom English is not their first or preferred language, especially folks who live in rural areas, tribal elders and programs for native people. And obviously younger disabled people and people with low incomes. We do have a number of new staff and I'm going to do a quick introduction of those. But generally we have several new permanent roles in our program. And then as Shane said, he's running the Shiva hotline. We have four people working on casework as our open enrollment support team. And then we have for the first time, which we're very excited about a group of interns from St. Martin's University. They're working on their bachelor's degree in social work and they're going to be doing some work with us to kind of capture beneficiary stories that we can share those narratives back to decision makers to help them understand better the impact of our work. So let me just flash ahead then here, and I don't know if you are all on the call, but Suzie Tegman joined us. She's our organization coordinator. Anita Inahosa is here and she is a Medicare specialist. And Tamara Myers is here and she is our Shiva Training Coordinator. Do any of you, and you don't have to, but do you want to say hello and introduce yourself?
I'll go. Hi, everyone. I'm Suzie Tegman. It's nice to be with you this afternoon. Again, I'm the new Shiba Coordinator, so I may have already communicated with a few of you, but happy to be here and serve along with you. Thank you, Tim, for the introduction.
Anita, Tamara, you want to say hello if you're here?
Hi, everyone. Yeah, I've been here almost two months. I'm a Medicare Specialist along with Samaria. It's a great group of people that I work with and I'm really fortunate to be here. So thank you for the opportunity.
Hi there. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, everyone. I'm Tamara, brand spanking new as of last Wednesday. So I'm just finding my way and it has been a nice warm welcome. So I appreciate it.
Yep. Thanks Tamara. Great to have you. And then so I'll just say broadly, what we're, what we're doing here is lots of institutional support from our new commissioner, Commissioner Kudurr. And we had, you know, what I would describe as like a heart-to-heart conversation between the time that she was elected and the time that she was inaugurated. And she said, I really want to make sure the Shiva program has all the support that you need to go forward. And we have a new Deputy Commissioner for Consumer Protection, Andrew Davis. And so we just had lots of support. We ended up sending a little bit of like inside baseball here, but a proviso request to the legislature to increase the funding for the Shiva program. So we're going to increase the complement of staff, put some more money into the contracts that we have out in the field. And then, you know, obviously the manifestation of more outreach and marketing materials, including the Jump Start Toolkit. So very excited about that support. And so we have, what we're going to have like starting on Monday yesterday is if you call the 1-800-562-6900 number, for the first time, we're going to have the technical language, it'll be like an interactive voice response system. So you're going to get a prompt that says, if this is about Medicare open enrollment, please push one and you're going to get directed to Shane's team. And then they're going to ask you about, tell me what you're calling about. And let's get a good referral then off to a local volunteer to help you. Or it's going to get referred into our team and then Anita, Samaria, Philip, Diane, they're going to work on those cases. And then we also, as I said, we have the interns and then we also have, so that complement in Shane's team is five individuals. And then we have four individuals who are going to provide casework of the kind of like overflow calls. So when there's not capacity at some point, Monica's going to say, I can't have 50 people waiting for a call every Tuesday, 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 Tuesday. I need some help from the OIC to take some of these back. So that's what the open enrollment support specialist team is going to help us with. So we're trying to provide some extra support to supplement the work that you all as volunteers and community partners are doing out there. You know, it's just, it's a bit of a forecast. We're always trying to guess where the support is going to be needed and then kind of make course corrections along the way. But we're very grateful for an increased presence this year, both in terms of our permanent staff and then seasonal help as well. So this is the expression, what, what's in it for me? So what, what's behind this then with Suzie, Anita, Tamara, the other folks, right? We're going to try to improve the quality of volunteer management work that we're doing, support for urgent cases and overflow calls, complex cases, fraud. Improve our support for volunteers in Central and Southeast Washington. You know, for a long time, Noreen has been carrying that entire load and we just need to have a stronger presence there. And again, with support from Andrew and Patty, our commissioner, we were able to secure a role for a bilingual, bicultural person, which is Ari. So we can start to move closer to full service in Spanish language as well. Tamara's going to help us lift our mentoring project. Shane's helping with better referrals and support for overflow calls. We're going to try to capture some more data, as I said, through the interns about who is calling, where are they calling from? What are they calling about? Get a, you know, beyond kind of the facts of the case, who, who are the people and why, why is our support so meaningful to them? And then obviously increase our outreach presence. We are continuing to grow our volunteer network. We're on the high side of 200 volunteers now across the state, which is a great improvement. We were down like in the 110 when I started four years ago. So a good rebound from the pandemic and still a long ways to go. And that's a lot to do with the work that you all are doing out there in the field. So if you're a volunteer coordinator, obviously you're kind of on the front line of screening and orientation and training. And then if you're a volunteer, it's about making people feel welcome in your group. And then also doing that pure coaching or mentoring work. That's so important to supplement the training that we're doing, technical skills training. So let me start then with like a very local view and then I'll kind of pan out a little bit. Obviously focus for us this year of education and outreach is this Medicare Jump Start Toolkit. And we've also had tons of support from our Public Affairs Department with creating a Medicare open enrollment set of webpages that have great content. And I sent you all a note to appreciate, we had eight different volunteers. I know several of them are on the call today. Record short-form videos that relate to the personas and the scenarios that we're describing in the toolkit, just to give people another way to access that information and make it a bit more relatable. And really to give them a sense of, well, if I was to pick up the phone and call and ask for an appointment or if I went out in the community to a program, you know, how am I going to be treated? Because I think it's a big leap to say, you know, call 1-800-562-6900. Lots of people have not had very positive experiences. So the hope is that showing you this is Ed DeBeck or this is Doug Chin. You're going to get someone like Rebecca Ip when you call in. It'll give you a sense of like, I might be willing to make that call. That seems like a person who would be patient and caring and they would treat me well. So that's really what's behind using kind of our own talent compared to hired professionals. And then tons of work to update publications and resources. I know we're in that kind of two-week period between the first of October and the 15th, where you all want that landscape of plans about all the plans and the benefits and the coverage and the provider network and the supplemental benefits. And Amy and I are working very diligently on that. So I think we'll have something for you soon, but it just takes us a while to kind of churn through all that data and kind of repackage it in a way that works for you. So I'm aware that that's urgent for you and we're working on it kind of as fast as we can. So with regard to the toolkits, we've distributed them through all the libraries and senior centers. There's a little more than 300 libraries and a little more than 300 senior centers. So at this point, we've shipped more than 30,000 of the English language versions out to the network. So feeling really positive about that. And again, thanks to the volunteer coordinators and the volunteers who have been hand-delivering those and making phone calls and making presentations and, and promoting that. You may have seen us on streaming services or heard us on the radio. We did a contract with Herb Weissbaum, the consumer guy. And so he has been out there saying, hey, you know, Medicare is icky, but Shiva program can help you get a packet at a library or senior center. And we're doing, with your support, we did a, you know, a broad request to say, where are the places in local small press that we should do some paid advertising? And so Donna is recycling those requests from you into local kind of print source advertisements. So at this point, all of the packets in English, as well as 13 other languages are available through the DES fulfillment site. The initial order is 100,000 English, 20,000 Spanish, 2,000 of each of the other languages. And we can absolutely print more if there's a need for that. The PDF version of the toolkit in other languages is available online. And for English language people, you can actually call or use our website to order those directly. And we'll ship them directly from our offices. So we're just trying to make lots of ways for this to be easily accessible to people and offering it to people so that if they need a personal appointment with you, as Shane said, some people will be able to do self-service. But if they need a personal appointment with you, we'd like them to be a little bit better prepared so we can have kind of a focused conversation and they can be more engaged and taking care of themselves. So what about zooming out a little bit to a state level view? As I said, we're working on the landscape of plans. I'm aware that two corporate changes this year that are pretty significant. Community Health Plan of Washington is discontinuing some plans. And one of the range of Kaiser plans is going to be discontinued. So probably these are going to be very different kinds of conversations because you're going to find that people with Kaiser probably want to stay with Kaiser and they just need to, you know, flex to a different plan. Whereas with CHPW, that's going to be a harder conversation for them because they're very attached to their providers. They're more likely to be low-income people. They're more likely to not have the same facility for English. So we're going to have to have a slightly more thoughtful approach to outreach to those folks. So I'm working with corporate people at CHPW and Kaiser to learn about what they're doing and talk about what we're doing and how we can partner together and have that show up, you know, on our public-facing media, like our website. Those people obviously got their annual notice of change and we had a surge of phone calls. And so you probably got a bunch of referrals and direct calls as well. I know that you're all very eager group. So as soon as your Medicare new handbook landed in the mail or online, you were checking the back of the book. And so there are some new plans. I'm talking about Medicare Advantage Plans in Washington State that weren't here before. So that will generate some conversations, right? About like, is this better than the one I have now? Or can you explain to me, you know, what does it mean that plans are coming and going? So that's the kind of thing that we want to make sure that you're well-prepared for because you're going to get those kinds of questions. No surprise, there are fewer standalone Medicare Part D plans this year. And that's a lot about the way that the reimbursement or the subsidies flow from the federal government. And I think that trend is just going to continue. So that'll probably be the first thing that we produce back to you is that list of standalone Medicare Part D plans. Some of you have reached out to me about rate increases and Medicare supplement plans. That's really true. So we are seeing double-digit rate increases for United Healthcare Plans sponsored by AARP. And they have about 70% of the market in Washington State. Same for usual Omaha, also a big player in Washington State. Again, no surprise, this just reflects that kind of inflationary pressure and Medicare Part V costs. But it's kind of sticker shock for people. And for some people, it's going to be like, is this a tipping point where they can no longer afford these plans? And they want to think about an MA plan. And of course, you know, our, our conversation is going to be, both have merits. And before you gather that up, let's make sure that there's not some financial assistance that could help you if you really, really want to stay in that system of care. And then of course, a lot of people have, are, are down to choosing plans around things like how much money is loaded on my debit card for the over-the-counter benefit? I mean, again, we're on the high side of 50%, pushing 60% now of our clients are dual-eligible people. And so these are like real serious pocketbook issues for them. And so they really are asking us to help them at that very granular level compared to supplemental benefits among and between the plans and making those changes. So obviously the Plan Finder tool is our good friend there, right? Medicare View, we are going to release here in the next week or so, some videos to help beneficiaries navigate the Medicare website. We did this last year and it was pretty successful, so we're going to do it again. We'll have a short-form video about creating an account and we'll have a short-form video about using the Plan Finder tool. If you're not already aware, significant change this year is that you'll now be required to have an email address to create an account at the Medicare website. For current users, they won't be required to do that as far as I know today, subject to change. But new users will have to have an email address if they want to create an account. And of course, we're going to recommend that as a best practice. And for people who want to use the Plan Finder tool to log in and use the Plan Finder tool is now going to require multi-factor authentication. So this will be similar to the exercise that you all went through when we updated the Stars database recently. Other significant changes that are happening at the Plan Finder and the Medicare website is there are now going to be detailed provider directories for the Medicare Advantage Plans or the Medicare Advantage Part D Plans. And there is a special enrollment period now for people who relied on the data that they saw on the Medicare website, enrolled from the Medicare website, later found out it was an error. They will have a special enrollment period to reconsider and make a change outside of the open enrollment period. And you're going to get some great training Elena's put together for the October CE about that. And then finally, maybe not finally, but next is this program that some of you have asked me about called Wiser, which is an opportunity for some Medicare administrative contractors. These are the private outfits that pay claims for Medicare to participate in a pilot project that starts in January. Washington is one of six states where our Medicaid, Medicare Administrative Contractor applied to be part of the pilot project. So I'm taking pains to say this was not Washington State government. The government's not involved. This was the decision that this private contractor took to participate in the program. And it's a pilot project intended to last for six years. And it's going to introduce for 17 different procedures, prior authorization requirement and post-claims review. And it's intended to obviously affect waste, fraud and abuse in the Medicare program and reduce overall spending. I have concerns about it. The commissioner has concerns about it. I'll release back to you a blog post that she published today. And we have concerns about the process. We have concerns about the way this is rolling out. But mostly what we're going to say is if you have any concerns... But mostly what we're going to say is, if you have any concerns as a beneficiary about this, please call the Shiba program, reach out to a volunteer. We're going to be tracking the complaints and reporting them. Back to our congressional delegation. Obviously, we're going to try to help solve them along the way. But we are, we will be kind of accumulating the stories if people have adverse experiences with things like delays in care. And then I'm just about at the end here. In terms of the political view, I sent you a very short. Note recently, just to say, super unfortunate about the federal government shutdown. And this is just traumatic for a lot of our colleagues who work in the federal government at CMS or at ACL. In the short term, you know, assuming that this doesn't drag on for months. There won't be any material impact to the Shiba program, to our grant funding, to our support for contractors. To our support for volunteers. And it shouldn't affect the beneficiary experience. With the exception of there's going to be a decrement of some of the services. That Social Security provides and Gretchen asked me about that ahead of the call. So I'm happy to talk about that some more. I want you to know that we're paying close attention to what's happening. But like you, we're, we're, we're pretty well just like in a wait and see posture here. And then finally, about state government, you know, most of the states have a requirement to have a balanced budget. So Washington State is going to have to during the next short session, what we call the supplemental budget session. We're going to have to figure out how to contend with. Rising caseloads, falling revenue forecast. And then potentially, you know, reduced federal funding support, especially for programs like Medicaid. Coming out of HR1. So it's going to just be a very tough state budget cycle. We're already faced with layoffs inside state government. And of course, that's, you know, has a tough impact on, you know, processing time, appointment time. And you know, and obviously collegial relationships very difficult. So we're, we're again, kind of a little bit of a wait and see attitude, but we know that when you reduce. The complement of staff or, or you know, senior people with deep expertise. Exit, it becomes very difficult to sustain programs administratively at the current level. So. It's a real concern and I don't want to discount that. So. Last two slides then. I am feeling very positive about where we're at. I feel like we have a more robust network. Than we did last year. The people in our team is more experienced. And we have more people in our team, more sponsor organizations, more volunteers in the network. I think we've got a great outreach approach with the Jump Start Toolkit. And a big investment in marketing and advertising for that. Although it's pretty disruptive about Kaiser Kaiser and Community Health Plan. It's not near what we saw last year with Regions and Primera and Aetna. So I think we're relatively better off that way. And having said that, I'm aware there's tons of anxiety. And uncertainty out there in the world right now, right? The zeitgeist is just broken. And it's just financially, it's a very, very tough time for people, right? We see. More and more seniors now are living in poverty and facing eviction and rising rents. And so. It's just to acknowledge that it's a very tough time for a lot of seniors. And then finally, the preview, as I said, tough Washington State budget, I think. I think we're going to continue to build on our success with recruiting volunteers. We'll be out in the world. In the first quarter of next year, recruiting Shiba volunteers and recruiting volunteers to work on the SMP project. So I'm very excited about that. As I said, and can to reinforce new contracts and new partnerships. That I think is just very, very positive. We're going to reinitiate our work on the mentoring project now that we've hired Tamra into our team. And we're going to continue to improve the quality of the instructor led and online coursework that we have. Many thanks to Elena. And then Kim's doing, Kim McKenna is doing an excellent job with the SMP project. With support from Diana and Philip, and we're hoping to hire. A third Medicare Complaints Coordinator to help us really. Just recognize the increasing volume of complex cases and potential fraud. And work that we need to do to help beneficiaries solve grievances. So that's my program for today. And at this point, I'd love to just. Open it up to questions, comments. Give me some feedback about how we're doing, taking care of you and what we can do. In the next couple of weeks to make things more secure for you, please.
And it sounds like there are a couple of different questions about Wiser. So I will let, if Donna or Judith would like to ask anything specific, I'll pass it over to them.
Yeah, this is Judith. Congratulations Shane. I remember when you came on board to the OIC. I was on the interview team. So I've already had a couple of people call me about. Procedures that are one of the 17. And 17 of the procedures identified in the Federal Register that. May, I'm not sure if it's may or will be subject to prior authorization. Do you, do we know if it's May or is it going to be a random? You know?
Well, so it's going to be a lot of complexity, right? Because. And, and, and for those of you who don't know, this is my colleague Judith Benderski. Judith worked here in the Shiba program before she retired and carried on as a volunteer. So you know, a lot of this is going to be about decoding, right? So to say that, you know, a procedure that made the list of 17 is treatment for erectile dysfunction, like. Well, what does that mean? Because that can mean lots of different things, right? Or, you know, it's a steroid injection for back pain, like that's a lot of different, right? That encompasses a lot of different procedure codes. But in general, the way the program is organized is. Most of the procedures are going to be subject to prior review. But some provider offices are essentially going to earn a path. And so if you're using that provider for that procedure, they're not going to be subject to preauthorization, right? So it's not universally, this is what's happening with this procedure.
I see. So they're looking at overutilization by certain providers. I, I mean, I've had speech therapist friends call me about this. But at any rate, so is it true that we would not be, I told this person, well, if you don't get the knee arthroscopy. Give me a call and I'll help you with an appeal, but maybe that's not the case. Maybe I just refer it. Maybe I look at my list of 17 and I say. Hey Phillip, I think this is one for you. How do we manage that?
That's, that'd be what we would recommend, you know, if, if the, I mean, it's going to be a little tricky, right? So the first thing would be that. You know, we don't really talk about it much, but there are. A lot of, a lot of these procedures are being negotiated all the time, kind of behind the scenes, right? Between provider offices and Medicare. But we just don't use that expression prior authorization or preauthorization. But. You know, doctors' offices want the assurance of getting paid. And if there's a question, they're going to ask the Medicare beneficiary to sign an advanced beneficiary notice. So you know, it's not as if we're going from zero to 60. This is happening to some degree. Already, right? So, but yes, in general, I think if you had a person who was very anxious. About, you know, I'm concerned about an unrealistic delay or a delay that's going to have an adverse impact for me. We can absolutely send those over here and Philip and Diane will take care of those. The other part of that generally, right, is there's also going to be post payment review of these procedures. So if on the other side of it, right, on the other side, the Medicare agency or the Medicare Administrative Contractor determines that. It should not have been paid for. There's not justification, right? There's not sufficient evidence of medical necessity. Then the provider may have to face recoupment. But the beneficiary would be held harmless. So I just feel like it's very important that beneficiaries here from our volunteers that. There, there's no world where this costs them more, right? The, the concern for us in terms of an adverse impact is going to be. A delay in getting a procedure that you need, like especially for pain relief, right? And then absolutely, we want those referrals. We are going to catalog those and we are going to report them back to our congressional delegation.
Okay. My, I had another quick question about the toolkits. And how I might use that in counseling. So like, let's say I have an appointment on Friday. Might I go to the DES fulfillment site? And put in an address and have the toolkit sent to my client ahead of time?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's what I'm going to try to do or send them a link to it if they're able to pull that up.
I, I think both of those are great and Shane's team will also be, you know, encouraging people. Hey, can I ship you one of these ahead of your appointment with Judith?
Oh, they are?
Yep. And, and absolutely, yes. I mean, again, you know, a lot of these conversations just turn on technology and access and. Having a facility for using it, but it's, it's a relatively simple to just look at a online version of it.
Are we going to keep tracking anyway of? How many calls are concerns that are not addressed by any of those toolkit situations?
We are, we are. And yeah, so, so better tracking in general is a lot about what we're asking. For Shane's team to do, right? And also better referrals, right? Because I know. It, it can be very difficult. I'm just going to say Monica because she raised her hand earlier. You know, it's, it's difficult when you have 50 calls to return and then you find out 12 of them are people that are turning 65 in June. Right? Because you're really trying to focus on the people that need to make a decision in the next five weeks. So we're going to do, as Shane said, we're going to, you know, gently, but say. Can I just ask a little bit about what you're calling about to make sure we make the appropriate referral for self-service and. Try to improve the quality of the referrals that way. But offering the packet is going to be part of our standard protocol.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good to see you. Hello.
Missed you. Yes, I thought I'd come back.
Hello, Tim?
Yep.
Just a quick question. You had mentioned plans that were leaving the, the area, region. Community healthcare and Kaiser. Up here in Snohomish in Skagit, we've been hearing also United Healthcare is dropping several plans. What do you know about that?
Yeah. Hi Bruce, thanks for being here today. So, yeah, so. As I said, I, I feel like, you know, if, if it affects you personally, you know, it feels very intense, but. What, what's happening, say with United Healthcare or with Kaiser. Is more like, well, we used to offer 10 plans and now we offer eight. But even that change still qualifies you for. The special election period to switch from a Medicare Advantage Plan to a Medicare Supplement Plan. But what we're, what we're generally thinking is if they're already in an MA plan and they're already in United Healthcare. And they're having a good experience, they probably just want help getting the next GHC plan. But yes, thanks for the, that's a good correction because I'm somewhat generalizing. There are those. Kinds of changes all over the state are, are happening. And, and that's. That kind of itemized listing of plans that Amy's working on now. And I, I, as I say, I know that's urgent for you and we're doing our best to get out there as soon as possible. And then we'll. As we have done in years past, publish kind of a print version and also an online version of. If you live in Skagit County, these are the MA plans and the covered benefits.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Good to hear you.
Yep.
Victoria? You're on mute. And that. Tina, were you going to say something? I just saw you yesterday. You have more to say? Couldn't exhaust your questions?
No, I got lots of answers yesterday. Thank you very much for coming, taking the time. I can't believe you guys did that. I'm all the way to the end. Thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to acknowledge that. The SHIP programs have a Volunteer of the Year Award and. I ask all the volunteer coordinators to nominate someone from their group and then. We pick a person to send forward. Our person unfortunately didn't win this year. But Tina was the person who was recognized by Annette Barker, her volunteer coordinator. So. Shannon and I went out there yesterday to help present the award to her and for them to interrogate me about open enrollment. They know that their favorite thing. Stump the chump. How about other people that have questions, please, or commentary? Kayla, what do you have for us?
So on the Medicare.gov sign in, you're right, we have, they have to have an email. But also it automatically goes to two-way or multi-factor identification. So it presents a challenge. In that they have to, you know, you have to get the client to put, give you their phone number and then. All, which you have, but then them to give you the verification code. Now I did find that I could put. My state phone number in there and I would get the verification code. But I'm not sure how a client's going to feel if we do that. I mean, I would tell them, I'm going to put our phone number in there, but the next time they go to sign in. It's going to, you know, have a dropdown with our phone number and not theirs. And they're going to want to know whose phone number is that.
It's, it's a great, thanks for bringing this up. This is such a good, it's like an ethical challenge, right? Besides being a practical challenge. So. You know, in general, what I would prefer is that the volunteers. Encourage people to get help from someone else with those kinds of technical challenges. You know, I'll, I'll say my bias is if they don't have an email address by now, they're not going to start using one tomorrow morning after they talk to you. And if they don't have a cell phone by now, they did it on purpose, right? It's not an accident that they don't have a cell phone number, you know, they. Maybe they live in Tanasket and there's no cell service, right? But I would say, I, I personally would counsel you all to just steer clear of providing. Your email or your phone number or creating one for them. I just think that it's, it's better off either that they get some support from that and there's lots of great programs in the community. That are, you know, mostly grant funded to do that. Or alternatively that they log in with your support as a guest. And just make sure they complete the whole transaction without logging out. But thank, you're, you're absolutely right about the, the engineering of it. And that's exactly how it works.
Yeah.
And that's a pretty big change. Yeah. And that's honestly, that's what's behind us kind of holding off on recreating the videos about the. Create an account or use the Plan Finder tool because I want to, I want to. Digest as much of the changes because you know, things kind of wiggle here in the last couple of weeks as possible so that when we. Publish something, it's pretty authoritative.
Good. Thank you.
You, you bet. My pleasure. Nice to hear you. How about other questions or comments? And again, looking for ideas or suggestions, how can we support you? Getting ready and then moving through this kind of challenging time.
Hi Tim.
Challenging but rewarding, right?
This is Victoria in Olympia. I just have a quick question about the, the toll free number.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm curious, are people asked to leave their zip code when they leave a message?
They are, yes.
If not, how, what, what, how, what is the decision to distribute? Those calls to different locales?
It is, we ask them both their county and their zip code because some zip codes go across counties, right? So we're, we're asking for both and recording both because that also gives us a sense of. You know, where is the outreach more successful or less successful?
I know that we're getting a lot of calls from all over the state. And I'm not sure how those calls come through, whether they come through the toll free number. Or how do they, how do they get distributed to areas that they're really? So far away from.
Yep. Kelly Hudson, are you on the call? You want to say hello? There. So Victoria, some of what's happening is that there are times when we turn off the phone. So this would be like for staff training purposes, for example. And during that time, people can leave a message that gets transcribed. And sometimes even though we're asking them, you know, politely. Hey, where are you calling from? What are you calling about? Please leave a detailed message, including your county's zip code, phone number. They don't, for whatever reason. And so some of those, I'll, I'll just call, you know, the, the calls that are kind of transcribed. When I'm going through the inbox to help out my inbox team. If it says 360, I'm sending it to Kelly. So you're getting some that maybe don't strictly speaking belong to you because I'm just leaning on Kelly.
And I'm, I'm here.
But to be fair, I do the same thing with other volunteer coordinators too.
Curious how that's done.
It just took me too long to get to the, the mute button. Tim, I think you've been sending them straight to me though, not our team's shared inbox.
Yep.
Yeah. So, so Victoria, I think the answer is if we're getting some in our shared inbox that are coming through automatically. That's accidental. I don't know if they're calling from a cell phone with some weird area code and it's reading it wrong. But the ones that, that Tim. And his folks intentionally send to us that are out of our area, those are coming straight to me. And I usually try to deal with those myself rather than give them to the team.
Okay, I was curious if they were even asked to leave their zip code when people call in. So it's good to know that. That message is being given. It's, and then they're not always just leaving that information.
Yeah, it's true. I mean, it's, it's an interesting. It's an, it's an interesting thing to just listen to some of the message. I, I do this almost every day, you know, listen to some messages that people sent. And I can say that what you hear a Um, and I can say that what you hear a lot is um just that like the pain and the anguish that people are experiencing, how difficult this is for them. And it's not uncommon for someone to record, you know, a sixty-second message and not even um get to their phone number. Uh, and then call back again and try again. Um, and and that happens. Um, and and I know it 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 may sound strange, but lots of times people um don't know their zip code or don't know their county. Or or at least in the moment, they're they're so overwhelmed that they can't kind of like um piece it together in the form of a message. So um, please be aware that we're doing the best we can to um kind of segregate those calls and parse them out. Um, and absolutely, if you get one that you're not comfortable with, Victoria, please give it back to Kelly or uh, you know, give it back to us. We we we, um, you know, we don't want you doing work that doesn't feel like the right work for you. Um, but please know that it's not because we're not prompting them.
It's just concern for the consumer because by the time we reach them, sometimes it takes a few calls just to get them.
Yep.
And we find, um, when we start helping them, we don't really find out until the end of the call where they're located. And then, oh, we have to send you someplace else if you want an in-person appointment.
Yeah.
We're three hours away from you or.
Right. No, I absolutely understand. You're you're absolutely right. It's unfortunate that still happens, but you know, again, open to suggestions about um, but we're, you know, we're we're very open. We can share anything with you about like what our process is like or 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 what the work we're doing or the documentation. You know, we're we're an open book in that regard.
I know. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Good to hear you. Um, someone whose screen name is Shiva Volunteer. You have your hand raised. Can I call on you?
Okay, this is Bill Thurston.
Hey, Bill.
On the telephone calls I come in from.
Thurston, but yes.
Other counties and all, sometimes it's because the client has looked up the telephone number on your webpage and found us and called our office. It has nothing to do with the how, the way that you've transferred the call. It just happens. And the thing on, the other thing on prior authorizations. Prior authorizations has been in business with Medicare for years. It's just been done differently, both pre and post authorization uh has been done. It just wasn't talked about the way they're talking about it this time with actually providing a list of those uh procedures and talking about that they're gonna use artificial intelligence and all the rest of this stuff. That's new, but they have done pre and post authorizations with on Medicare procedures. So, and one of the, one quick thing where you could help us out is that we in Thurston County had a lot of folks from Kaiser. And it took us quite a while to actually find out that Kaiser had built a website to take care of this it's, the si- the situation. And their website with their, talking about their four different pro- plans that are now open in our county anyhow. In in a certain respects, they're better than what's on the Plan Finder. Because the Certificate of Benefits and and all of that stuff on their website is actually twenty twenty-six. And if you look at it on the Plan Finder, it's still twenty twenty-five. So their site was actually better off than than what we could find on the Plan Finder. But let me tell you, there's a lot of elderly folks that, once we talked to them, they'd go back to bed because they had talked about, they hadn't slept for a couple of days because they were gonna lose Kaiser. And they were just in a panic, whatever.
Yeah. Bill, thank you for that. Um, um, no, I I agree. I've seen, I've seen that. I think they do have a good website. And um, they also are promoting some uh webinar programs that people can tune into. Uh, I signed up for one, I don't know, a week or two out. Um, and I, as I said, I'm gonna have a conversation with their corporate office about, hey, will they let us um, you know, put their information uh up on our website, link to it? I gotta check in with my public affairs team to make sure they feel okay about that. But no, I think they're, I think they're doing a nice job. I mean, they have to send the annual notice of change letter, which sounds super threatening, right? And we did get a surge of calls about that. But I think they've done a pretty good job, honestly, about trying to stand up some customer support presence. So um, I'll take a note, I I wrote it down, Bill, to um make sure that you all have access to that Kaiser website and the materials that they have. And, you know, feel free to sign up for one of those um webinars if you feel like that helps you with your counseling practice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. It's always great to hear from you. And yeah, and 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 the prior authorization, that's true, you know. I think the AI really is very provocative to people, um, which I find kind of ironic because there was just a survey of Medicare beneficiaries about like, the question was something like, um, if there was a good AI tool that helped you um choose a plan compared to the Plan Finder tool. And the majority of people said, yeah, I would use that. So it's interesting to me that they're they're kind of on both sides of that question. Um, and um, I think the other thing that's provocative is that Medicare will um share some of the savings from the program back to the Medicare administrative contractors, right? And that's novel. That's new. We haven't done that before. And so there's a sense of like, well, then are are they gonna kind of have their finger on the scale then in terms of making these determinations? I personally don't think that that's what's gonna happen because at the end of the day, CMS still drives the decisions, right? They they program the systems around CMS guidance, but it has been pretty provocative for people. So I think you're gonna get some questions about it in your counseling practice, so I wanted to bring it up today. And I think, um, Bill, I think what you said is is right on that. A a lot of this is not very new. Um, I don't know that it's determinative and it's like, should I stay with original Medicare or go to an MA plan? It's nothing like prior authorization or referrals in a network um in in MA plans. But that's people's fear, right? This is the camel's nose under the tent. So you may just have to hear people out about that and then just reassure them that you're not guiding them to choose one thing or another, you're just are, you know, are highlighting or articulating the trade-offs. But I expect to get asked about it and I'm working on some talking points for you. Yeah, thanks for that. How about other folks?
Tim, there's, uh, there's another concern, particularly, I think, in the rural areas with limited plans and, you know, our number, particularly PPO plans, has gone down significantly. But I noticed in looking at those plans, the co-pays are significantly higher. So in other words, you know, it used to be if you went to the primary doctor with zero dollar copay in-network and twenty-five out and specialist was um twenty-five in-network and fifty out. Well, now it's going to fifty percent coinsurance on the copay and fifty percent coinsurance out of network for hospitalization. So there's a significant cost increase, which in the client that I had yesterday, tried to look at and compare what would a Medicare Plan G do cost-wise compared to what their co-pays are gonna be because they're gonna be significantly higher. So it could have a significant impact on those, particularly the new ones that can, you know, that are trying to decide which way to go.
Uh, that that's really fair, Ed. And I think uh, I had, to be honest, I haven't spent some time on the Plan Finder tool yet. But what I have heard is that um, a a lot of plans that were kind of straight-up PPO plans are going to kind of morph into HMO plans. So they're gonna be more restrictive, right? The um, uh, I think, I think that that's real. I think you're gonna see that. And then also your observation of increased cost sharing. Uh, I think you're gonna see that, you know, and that's just a lot about the um, the sort of dynamic tension between the providers and the insurance companies, right? I I know that you all are aware because you're counseling your way through this. But we've had, you know, these really high-stakes negotiations like Regions and MultiCare and Aetna University of Washington. Um, and I think that's what, you know, that's what um, that's what's behind these changes that you're seeing the MA plans are adjusting to the fact that they can't always drive those deep discounts, especially in rural areas, right? Where the providers are uh not as warm to this idea. So that that's a great observation.
Right. Do we know if any of the providers are going to try and get more medical clinics and doctors to sign up for their plan? Because we, like in WellCare last year, a number of our clients in, you know, in Gray's Harbor, uh, their doctors wouldn't accept WellCare.
Yeah, well, um, and again, I I think, Ed, I think that's gonna, you know, for the next decade, that's gonna be the drama, right? You're gonna, um, like I, uh, Tina said, Shannon and I were at Whibley Island yesterday. And um, you know, the, I I think the future for healthcare in rural areas is is really problematic. Um, you know, for a host of reasons, but I think that um, yeah, I mean, definitely we see, you know, there's no such thing as a solo practitioner anymore, right? I mean, those days are long gone. So you see these multi-specialty clinics and now, you know, they're being acquired by insurance companies like United Healthcare and private equity firms uh are taking an ownership stake in these, uh, you know, beyond physician-hospital arrangements. Um, and yeah, it it, you know, tons and tons of retirements on the other side of the pandemic. Um, so I I think it's gonna, it's gonna honestly just be really challenging for a while. And and you'll see that manifest in Medicare first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. All right.
So I guess this is just my way of saying that we need you more than ever. So keep eating a lot of vegetables and walking and getting good sleep at night. Hey, Jean, what do you have for us?
Okay, going back to the wiser models. Uh, I don't know when the RFPs for the companies to apply to be the AI consultants or whatever they call them. Uh, but my concern about this whole AI, when I saw the RFP, and this is from CMS, is that they're asking that companies who have prior experience in AI and explicitly like Medicare Advantage Plans, comma. So it makes me concerned a bit about if the RFP was out late this year or not very long ago and they have to be in place by January one. It's like MA plans are gonna be the ones who are being, going to do the AI adjudication. If it's AI for adjudication, that could be for administrative um efficiencies. So do you know anything about what kind of AI thing they're talking about?
I don't, I don't. Um, I mean, that, you know, honestly, Jean, you know, p- part of the concern is just the the way that it got rolled out, right? So there was this thing called an RFA request for applications and so. Yeah, yeah. So CMS just said, who who would be interested in, you know, partnering with us on this? And then um, they they had their own kind of criteria that they applied for the selection process. One of those was geography, right? So I I, you know, personally, you know, my, um, I'm speculating. I don't have any inside knowledge. But, you know, part of how Washington got picked is they can't all be Midwest or East Coast outfits, right? And so the pilot is six states across the country. And um, but that process is is very opaque, right? It's very much a black box about how that got done, uh, what went into it. I don't think they're gonna be very forthcoming about sharing data about the savings or things like the denial rates. Um, but you know, we, it, as the commissioner and I talked about this morning, you know, we're gonna continue to press for that as much as we can. Um, but it's um, the part of CMS that's doing this is called CMMI, the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Innovation. And they're, um, the way that um, uh, kind of division was constructed, it's very much insulated from political pressure and funding pressure. So I don't know that we're gonna get much insight into it until um, uh, you know, the horse is out of the barn, so to speak.
Thank you.
Just for you, Philip, I'm missing my unglits here. Animals that chew their cud. What do you have for us, Julie? And then I'll come to you, Prakash.
Um, one of the concerns that I have about the pilot program also is that I heard that during the six-year period that they could add any procedures they want to that. It's not the seventeen procedures. It can be any procedures over that period.
I think you could count on that. I I think you could count on that happening. That seventeen procedures will shift over time. Yes, for sure. I think that's a sure thing. Yep. And so I think we just have to um kind of keep appraised of that for sure. But yes, I think that's a sure thing. Hello, Prakash. Nice to see you on screen virtually. I guess I've seen you in person recently. That was nice.
Yeah, video. Um, question I have is, is the appeal process going to be uh, it given to the uni- uh, you know, the uh consumers so that they can appeal it in a timely manner?
Yes.
The, is it going to be same as it is for Medicare Advantage or is it different? And what are the timelines and such?
Um, let me get back to you about the timelines. That question I've been asked and I don't know. But um, same protocol for appeals in original Medicare, not Medicare Advantage.
Oh, so what is the origin um, appeal process in original Medicare? Because we ne- we didn't have, generally, we, in a very few, uh, you know, with some DME cases, uh, we had the pre-author, otherwise we didn't have the prior authorization. So what is the appeal process for original Medicare?
And that one I'm gonna take offline, but I'll take that one for homework for me and Philip. Um, it basically, it's a, a, like, it's a five-step process that starts with like filing a complaint or a grievance. And then it can ultimately move into the civil justice system. But um, I, uh, Philip and I will take that one offline because people will ask you that and I want you to feel ready to answer.
And what is the timeline? That is going to be important. How much the treatment is going to be delay, delayed for uh an en- enrolling?
So that is a good question. So um, I I don't, I don't know what kind of um, what the expectations or the standards are going to be for the Medicare administrative contractors to provide feedback to beneficiaries. Um, but there is such a thing as an expedited appeal. So I think what you'll see is some, um, you know, providers having a consultation with clients about like, let's make sure that this doesn't get delayed by filing an, uh, you know, filing an appeal right now. Um, and and then those expedited appeals have a faster review cycle. But um, I'm not aware, in in that specific legislation, I'm not aware what the um standard timelines are or or what um, what qualifies as being a significant delay. But I'll I'll do some research on that one, Aruna, and get back to you. Nice to see you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I had a little bit of different question here, Tim. Um, this is about the presence of Shiva at the Pab Benefit Fair.
Yes.
Last year in Spokane as well as in Cheney, uh, for Eastern Washington. We had two uh Pab Fairs and we were there. But this year I don't see us to be there. Is there a reason or something that can be done yet?
Oh, shit.
Um, so great question. Um, I had a lot of feedback from my team that that was uh a really challenging effort for us to stand up to be a regular presence at all of the, I think nineteen they had last year, uh, benefits fairs. And so we just took a decision that we weren't going to um inside our team stand up that same presence again. But I am in contact with our friends at the HCA. They're willing to um take our toolkits and display them. They're interested in having general materials from us about how to reach out to us. And um, as volunteers, I would, I I know that you'll be absolutely made to feel welcome there if you want to um, uh, you know, have a a table. Uh, I can help you to arrange that. And I do have the um, um, what do you call it, like the schedule of the places? Um, it's a, it's a, it's a little bit different than last year. You know, it it depends on where they can make contacts, you know, right? With the community colleges and other places. But um, but if you don't have it, Prakash, I'm happy to share it back to you. And 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 you personally, any of the volunteers, you're absolutely welcome to attend. I just couldn't commit my team to be a regular presence.
I know. It's here, it is.
Sorry. Could you share that with me also? Thank you for asking about that, Prakash. We've been searching for that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Here in.
Yep.
Sorry. Here in Eastern Washington, it's on fourth of November and fifth of November. Fourth in Spokane and fifth is in Cheney.
Okay.
Usually I attend both of them. I just go visit friends and people in both the places.
And I really appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
I can always carry a few uh brochure and toolkit with me and just leave it there.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Good to see you. This is fun. What else are you guys thinking about?
What we're gonna talk about today, we're gonna talk about this video lines or what our stock market is. We've done many transactions in ten years without a turn.
Sorry, Angie, I'm muting you. How about other questions or comments? Um, it occurred to me that I had one more thing to share with you. Um, who knows, like, stuff goes on up there inside my head that it's somewhat beyond me, honestly. Um, but I did feel like I need to tell you slightly sad news. Um, one of the artifacts of kind of the um cutbacks um that we've seen with CMS is that they're gonna discontinue the CMS NTP National Training Program. So all the. So all the staff in the program have been laid off and they're gonna decommission the website here in a few weeks. So for those of you who have enjoyed the CMS NTP Bootcamp. And the other training programs, I'm sorry to tell you that that's not gonna continue. So um, there is an opportunity to go to their site and download things that are interesting to you. Uh, if that's, you know, if that's worthwhile, um, I, I think the, the materials there are really pretty excellent. Um, you know, some of them are sort of tutorials, some of them are sort of references, some are recorded programs uh, that they've done. Um, so we'll, we'll kind of be scouring it a little bit for stuff that's interesting that we could repurpose. Um, but I'm, I just, I, I, it, it occurred to me that I should pass that on as uh, one of those changes that I neglected to put in the slideshow. Um, so sad for the staff, right? My colleagues, um. Said for me, you know, that my colleagues lost their job and I think also that's a great resource, so. Um, no archiving, our abbey is just going away. So it's up to us individually to kind of accumulate the stuff that we want to um, hold on to. Um, what else um, have I neglected to mention? Ed Guzman, how are you, my friend?
Doing good, doing good, thank you.
Sunny three hundred and seventy-five days a year.
We're gearing up on our side here, um, going from clinic to clinic. We, we're. Excited. There are little, there's a little bit of trepidation in the air because um. Uh, things have changed a bit since last year, but um, people are feeling more confident over time and uh. I've had a lot of good direction from the volunteers themselves that have a way of doing things at each site, so. Um, excited to see how this goes. I don't know how the kickoff happens. I asked Linda if. There's some sort of ritual before this all begins, but I guess not. Uh, we will see as the throngs come through and we help them, so. But we're grateful to OIC for all the support because I've been in contact with your people nearly daily, so.
I appreciate that. And um, it was nice to come up and uh, have an appreciation event with you guys, so thanks for that. You're doing a great job. Let me just. Publicly say you're doing a great job there. Um, you know, we loved Eva Bennett. Eva um, was the volunteer coordinator there and. Uh, o- Olympic area agency and aging for a number of years and she had to step down and. Ed has come behind her and you're just doing an excellent job, Ed. Very impressive.
Thank you.
Um, how about other people that want to be heard? I don't really wanna, I mean, I do want to, but I don't really wanna call you out. Um, I just miss talking to you. I don't get to see you enough, but anybody would like to have some airtime, here's your chance. Or tomorrow or the next day. Hey Tina.
I, I, I would really encourage people to avail themselves of the office hours, Noreen's office hours. During open enrollment, I just, I think it's a wonderful way to get support. To be able to get some little answers squeezed in, hear from other volunteers. It's a really, if, if people can find time, I know that's probably the toughest part is finding the time. But I would really recommend that to other people. That's a great service. I appreciate that you, that you all find time to, to do that for us. Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, maybe, Noreen, if you're here, do you wanna make a pitch for uh, office hours?
Um, sure, thanks. Um, first, thank you, Tina. Um, but we're doing office hours. We've been doing them twice a month for the, for the um, regular season. But during open enrollment, we're going to be starting them um, weekly. They're either on a Tuesday or a Wednesday. And you can find them on the training calendar. So this is an hour of time when RTCs will be there. It's not just me. Um, there'll be, all of the RTCs are going, are going to be doing different sessions. And you can come ask your questions that you have from counseling and sometimes people like to just hang out and hear what questions other people are asking. And you're welcome to do that too. So please, you know, feel free to join us. And Kat, and Kendra shared the volunteer training calendar link in the chat.
Thank you. And um, I should know this, but um, did, did we also, Noreen, load on the Trumba calendar? The um, kind of office hours for beneficiaries to drop in and have um, informal counseling?
You know, I'm not sure. I know they're on the public calendar.
Okay.
Yep.
So last year, out of desperation, I organized this uh nightly Zoom call, five thirty to seven PM, where I would just come on and um. Just do informal counseling with people. We would often have five or ten people a night. And um, it was pretty successful. I think it was helpful. Um, it lifted my spirits. And so we're um, gonna bring that back again with a little bit more uh, formality. So we have a twice a week. Um, it, it's, like I say, it's pretty informal, so we just are gonna show up and say. Anybody who has questions about Medicare open enrollment or Medicare in general. Um, we'll try to answer them and it's, it's really lovely because people support each other. Um, and ask questions about each other's concerns and help each other. Um, and I think we put that on our calendar, but if we didn't, I'll make sure to get it out to you. So I'm just offering it as an alternative. If you're feeling like um, you're booked up and you can't um, get the help you need. Or if there's somebody that you think um, just needs some companionship in terms of problem solving out loud. Um, we, we would absolutely welcome them to those programs. What do you have for us, Noreen?
Yeah, they aren't on the volunteer training calendar yet, but they are on the public calendar. People going to the events calendar on the, the Shiba public site.
Thank you.
Uh huh. And a quick side note about that, in case you haven't navigated that site before. Um, if you, I'll just do a very quick share and I'm sorry, this is gonna be kind of little. Um, but if you open it, what you will see, are you guys all able to see this? Alright, great. If you open it, what you'll see is just a handful of them until you look down below. And so um, if you're looking for anything specific, just remember below it, there is a long list. So um, if you're on there, uh, you can expand it pretty quickly.
Thank you. And what would it, what would it be called on the um, screen for um, someone to know that that's what it is?
Oh, let's find it.
In my imagination, it's the one called Open House on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Think it might be. Let's take a look here. Here it is. I believe it is. I think this is the one, OEP Q and A session.
Alright, so just informal conversation. Um, I, I, like I said, I find it very heartening because people are so willing to offer help for each other and offer support for each other and um. They learn a lot from each other and um, so I think it's, it's a good outcome and we're gonna try it again. And you all are welcome to come and um, help me. Um, and Ed has a question. Kendra, where does he find that calendar, please?
I added it to the chat here, but why don't I put it in one more time? There it is. Oh, okay, great. Yeah, we have, um, we have two different ones. So we have the volunteers. So kind of, you know, for the, the, the trainings that we provide to help our. Incredibly valuable um, volunteer force. Get out into the community with the, the skills and technology that they need. And that one is the Trumba calendar. And I will go ahead, I'm gonna put them both in one more time in one. Uh, so I'm gonna put Trumba calendar and I'm gonna put um, for volunteer counselors.
And Kendra, I just put the link for the public calendar.
Ah, thank you.
In the chat.
Okay, great. That's perfect. So yes, we have it all in there. And the differentiation is just that if you see the Trumba calendar, it's really for um, volunteer counselors. And then this one over here is the, the insurance resources. And this is for beneficiaries. But of course, you're all welcome to come to these too.
Excellent. Shane says he helped a few people find events. Thank you, Shane.
Yeah, what, can I say one thing real quick about that? You can, over on the left where you see that, Kendra, where you can sort by type of event, which helps quite a bit. Because then it gets rid of so much extra stuff to weed through, so.
Yeah, if you just, if you click on, if you click online and Medicare open enrollment events, you'll only get the open houses and a few other things. So that, that weeds it down, way down.
Yeah.
There you go. Look at that. And of course, if you wanted to select everything. Um, and you wanted to find something specific to your county, you could do that. So. That's right. That's right. Yeah, so, so much great stuff going.
Thank you, Kendra.
Thanks.
Okay, friends, I'm gonna wrap up here unless you shout out or raise your hand. Give you a chance to go off and get ready for the Major League Baseball game on tonight. I know you're cheering for the Cubs. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. We know all the help we can get. All Mariners, okay, Mike. They secretly hope the Cubs and Mariners are gonna play in the World Series together.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks for everything, everybody.
Thank you, Kelly. Great to see you all. So uh, again, if this is new to you, um. We do essentially the same program tomorrow and the day after. I think tomorrow morning, we're in the morning, maybe eight thirty. Um, and um, it, you know, it's gonna be the same slide deck, but the conversation is a lot about whoever shows up and whatever questions they have. Or whatever, you know, concerns people bring. So feel free to come back, but obviously um, it's an invitation, not an obligation. Um, Kendra will help us get the recording posted out on the website. So if you wanna um, hear it again, you're welcome to do that. And um, as I said at the outset, you know, main purpose for me is just to have a chance to thank you personally. I don't get to see you all near as much as I wish. Um, um, so please invite us to come visit. I love to come visit you guys and see, see you in your native habitat. Um, but if I don't get to do that, I appreciate this opportunity just to thank you personally. And sincerely, what you do um, just makes such a big difference. I, I think Ed's not exaggerating when. Or Bill's not exaggerating when they say people are not sleeping at night over the stress and anxiety of this, so. Um, please know that the work that you're doing makes a meaningful difference in people's lives and um. You all just individually and collectively are an inspiration to me, so I'm very grateful for what you do. Um, and with that, I will um, sign off, but please reach out to me anytime. Um, if there's anything I or my team can do to help you. Have a nice afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.